Mr. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
Five present, we have a quorum.
I understand there may be a change on the agenda. Do you want to share with us what the changes are?
Change for...
Are we pulling some things, I understand?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Number three, under the consent calendar, we're going to pull because of the item to be discussed in closed session tonight.
Okay. And is there any others?
No.
Okay. All right then, so a motion to approve the agenda with number three being pulled from the consent calendar.
Second.
Mr. Maurer.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, we don't have any publics, so I assume there's no public comment, so we will go into closed session. Okay, thank you. We're going to come back into regular session. Would one of you ballplayers lead us, and who is the captain? Is there a leader on your team? Okay.
Everybody jump up.
Sir, you were going to lead us in the pledge, please.
Yep, there you go.
Okay. Okay, go ahead when you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Normally, please remain standing. I'd like to read you a letter. We generally go have our prayer, but there's a reason for doing it this way this time. I received a letter from the International Association of Firefighters. None of us knew about this. None of us know any details about it, and we're wanting to share it with you because it's a very tragic story that we didn't know. So it's here, "Dear Mayor Breeden, firefighter EMT David D. Jones, who died in the line of duty accident on July 27, 2017, was a member of the Channel Light Fire Department. He sacrificed his life in an act of courage, humanitarianism, and selfless devotion to duty. We want you to know that the loss suffered by your community is shared by the 300,000 members of the International Association of Firefighters. We join with you in conveying our sincere condolences to the family of firefighter EMT Jones." Does anybody know anything about this?
I know him.
Okay. Pardon me?
I know him.
You know him. Did you know he passed away?
Yes.
Okay. We would like to contact, I just got this today, so we haven't done any follow-up. We'd like to see if the family has needs that can be fulfilled. Would you talk to me, or talk to either, talk to Jed, or talk to Ricka? We want to do whatever we can for this family. We want to acknowledge this, and the selfless devotion to his job and his community, and we, so right now, when Councilman Edwards, or Thomas, leads us in prayer, I'd like you to remember him and all of our firefighters, and our peace officers, who put their lives on the line every single day. We're just devastated because nobody knew about it except you, and we thank you. If you'll share with them things that you may know and need that may have arisen, so sir, if you would, do that.
Shall we bow? Father, we extend our hearts and thank you for the opportunity to extend the grace and power and your might in the Jones family. The fighters that go before us and give their life and their sacrifices for us, our first responders, we honor you for their lives and allowing them to be a part of this great community. And the very things that they do comfort their household, their families. We thank you for what they do and continue to do for this great community. Father, thank you also for this community, the men and women, the boys, the children that continue to be leading examples in this community. This is a great place, Father. We thank you for placing us here, allowing us to rest and rule here. Give us wisdom and insight as we make these decisions that will govern this community, that it will always give you praise, glory, and honor. This we ask. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the attorney's report. Sir?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. City council met in closed session on three items that are identified on the agenda. The council received reports from legal counsel on all three, gave direction, no final action was taken on all three items. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a really, really exciting presentation, and so if you all and Jed will join us at the podium. We are honored and blessed by the presence of some pretty remarkable people. Before I ask Jed to come up here and talk to you about why we're here, I want to share a story with you. At the beginning of baseball season, as mayor, sometimes you get to do some really cool things. Sometimes you've got to do some things that aren't the most cool things to do in the entire world. But Jed asked me if I would throw out the first ball at ball season, and I'm going, "Yeah, I can do that. I mean, I played ball 60 years ago. I can do that. I'm 70, so I can do anything." So I go out there, and I'm trying not to look foolish, although I do it pretty well sometimes, and I grab the ball, and I go... Well, it made it about five feet in front of me. So I want to share with you that you don't have to be the greatest ballplayer in the world and be mayor at the same time. And I was so proud to be able to do that. And what is amazing is this team was part of the team that I got to throw the ball out to, and I am so proud of this. So Jed, come on up and share your story.
Well, first off, when I told the council about these fine young men, they were all excited and wanted you all here today to give you something that, it's not money, O'Day, but to recognize the accomplishment that you did. And you might not think that it was a big deal at the time, but trust me, it was. The two older guys, the two bigger kids there, they know what the accomplishment was. And when you guys are still talking about this to your kids, "Yeah, well, when I was a kid," well, they'll get tired of hearing this story one day. So this team, for those of you that don't know, or didn't have a chance to see play, man, you missed out. They went, well, one, winning districts is huge, but to win regionals was incredible. And then to go down to the super regionals and face those teams that they did down there and played awesome. So I'm proud that the council wants to recognize you, and I know all of you since little tiny kids. Beecroft's still a little tiny kid, but no, you guys did great, so I'll let the mayor, well, here, I'll introduce them.
If you would. And I want each one of you to shake their hands and congratulate them, so if you would come around to all of us, please.
Well, let's start off with, I'll kind of give them some little nicknames here, because, you know, that's always good. We'll start off with the bosses. Coach Beecroft is hilarious to watch on the sidelines. He reminds me of an old Yankees manager. The guy was probably tossed out of more games than you can imagine. Well, so is Coach Beecroft. No, but he did an amazing job. The next one is Coach Bachmann. His job was to keep Coach Beecroft in line, so... And Coach Yoder, where are you at? There you are. Coach Yoder was to keep both of those guys in line, so... We'll start off first with the kids. Devin Beecroft, our third baseman, he plays amazing over there. You can stand up. Sure.
We have gift certificates at Pizza Hut for pizza for all of you. We really want you to do it together, but I'm going to give each one of you one, and then we're going to give the rest to the coaches. So congratulations. Thank you.
Cody Kent is next, left field pitcher. Did amazing. Come on. Mike Smazna. Come on up, Michael. Michael plays shortstop and pitcher. Connor Batzer pitched lights out for all these tournaments. As he others did. Corbin Branson, come on up. If you haven't seen, don't let his size fool you, the kid is fast. Mr. O'Day, our center fielder, he's going to want five or six of those and try to sell them later. Kyle Curtis, our first baseman. Seth Hurricane, it's really Seth Kane, but they call him Hurricane. One of the things like with Seth, as many of these kids did, at the regional tournament to put the game away, I think, what was it? If I'm not mistaken, 10-0, 16-0? 10-0, but the final play was him jacking one over the right field fence, so it was cool. AJ. I'll use your pizza thing. Devin Segovia, come on up. Matthew Yoder. That's all I got. Kyler Bachmann. So Kyler, they had to increase the league fees for next year because Kyler Bachmann's got a box of balls that he took from the Pony League, got a bunch of home runs that he hits, so...
Let's, I'll come over and you, and all of us get our picture and get these guys. Come on.
Devin, stand up.
This is our future, folks. Our future we have with these young men and women and all the whole team. Thank you, guys. Thank you. We'll give you all a chance. If you want to stay, you're more than welcome, but if you want to leave, we'll let you go.
I think you should all stay.
I think Coach said stay. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Thank you. Enjoy your pizzas.
Can I leave too?
No.
You're not on the baseball team.
Well, you all, the best of you must know who this short man is. Okay. We'll see. I know. We'll see how it works. This is his first time. Okay. Okay, I think they're probably pretty much out, so we're ready to start our meeting. The next item is public comment. Persons wishing to address the council on items that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, city council may not take action on these items and that do not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes of public comment section. The agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. Is there anyone wishing to make public comment?
Of course. Ronald Porter. Good evening, Ms. Mayor, city council members. I came today to talk about freedom of speech, because it's in the news right now, and it's very dangerous. We have city councils across the nation that are kowtowing to the violence to silence it. Freedom of speech is the core of our nation. Without it, we lose. Because there's people out there that want to create violence to silence the opposing party, whichever side it may be, is wrong. I'm not up here supporting the racist groups. In fact, I appall everything they stand for. But we have to be willing to stand up and fight for their right to say it. Because without it, the next day, it's your right to say something that will be attacked. Probably one of the biggest misconceptions of what's happening in the media right now is the tearing down of Confederate statues. And it's been grown in our country through the promulgation of a falsehood, and that is that the Civil War was about slavery. The Civil War was not about slavery. Anyone that studies history knows that to be a fact. The Civil War was about states' rights. The Southerners objected to paying an unfair portion of their taxes. During the 1850s, 90% of the federal revenue was gained through tariffs. Of those tariffs, the South paid 75%, although the South only received a small fraction of that, and they were only a third of the population of this nation. I have the number here, but I can't see it right at the moment, so... And the proof that this is actually true are three things. Most people don't know it, but there was a Cohen Amendment to the United States Constitution that was never ratified prior to the Civil War, which was actually passed by Congress that stated that the South could keep their slaves forever. And that didn't deter them from, or convince them to re-enter the nation. And they had the votes to ratify it. Lincoln wrote a letter stating quite clearly, "We can't let the South secede because what are we going to do for our tax dollars?" A very interesting part about Lincoln that most people don't know is while he didn't, you could argue either way of whether he approved or disapproved of slavery, I don't believe he approved of slavery, he wanted to resettle all the freed slaves in another country. He didn't want them to stay here. Unfortunately, we would like to rewrite history. Right now, the progressives, if you want to call it, I don't like to use terms because it's those who want to destroy our nation, are using the symbols of this Confederacy falsely. It's a false flag. They don't represent slavery. They represent states' rights. That's what the battle was over. It was not over slavery at all. I mean, I can make arguments where you can put fractions of it to that, and mostly that was slavery in the New Territories. But we need to sit back and look and look at our history and say, "You're not going to rewrite our history." Even if it was bad history, we need those statues, we need those things to remain so we remember that bad history, so we learn from that history. Rewriting it and destroying it doesn't change anything. One of the most important factors that people forget completely is our Constitution and Declaration of Independence were anti-slavery documents. They weren't pro-slavery documents. Slavery was brought to this country not by Americans. Slavery was brought to this country by England. We inherited the problem, a problem that couldn't be solved at the Constitutional Convention. We need to sit back and say, "This is our history. This is what's important." We need to support that history. But more important in today's age, we cannot allow violence to silence the opposing party. A prime example of opposing parties, most of you remember the case on Skokie, Illinois. Skokie, Illinois, the ACLU brought a suit to allow them, the neo-Nazis, or Nazis, or whatever it was at the time called, to protest or have their march. They won the case. The most interesting part of it, though, was this. When they actually had their march, no one paid any attention. There was the attention over the civil suit, but the march, the media just ignored them. When we have neo-Nazi groups and these other things, let them have their protest. Let them be ignored. Let us ignore that evil, but let's not silence it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there other public comment?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Blaine Simmons. I am here representing Serra Costa Community College. I just want to let everyone know about our Serra Costa Rocks event that's going on tomorrow afternoon. It's an event for students to come, learn about the college, get some good information from the various departments. There's going to be various giveaways throughout the day. There's going to be food and some pretty great raffles to get some school supplies, like a MacBook Pro, a laptop, and tablets and whatnot. Following the event, it's going to be a, let's see, a free movie showing of Guardians of the Galaxy's Vol. 2. That's going to be open to the community, and that should start around 8:15, as soon as the sun goes down. So I'd love to see everyone there, and if there's any questions, feel free to ask. We'll leave some flyers in the back. Thank you.
Mr. Blaine, you said your name was?
Yes.
What date, you said it was this Saturday?
It's this Thursday.
This Thursday?
This Thursday.
Tomorrow?
Yes.
And it starts at, what time does it start, sir?
It's going to be from 3:30 to 6:30, and then the movies can be following directly after at 8:15. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't start timing, and I want to explain my new apparatus here. No, I'm not listening to rock. I was earlier, but I couldn't understand it. This is the new hard-of-hearing sound system, which we have in the back. If you want one of these, you can hear some of these guys up here, ask for one of these. And by the way, they do work, so be careful what you say up there. All right, you can start timing, but I see you did already, so...
Nope, I stopped it.
Okay, all right. I read and got an email that there's a public forum workshop on the 30th of August to give the public a chance to input their desires for a new city manager. And I threw up my hands and I said, "What gives? Whose idea was this? Was it the council? Was it this new Dr. Bill Mathis?"
I discussed it with our headhunter.
I don't think it's needed. I have never had one with any of the other city managers that we've hired. If I had the opportunity and was in charge of hiring a city manager, you know who I'd hire? I'd hire Cindy Crawford. A lot of people don't know who Cindy Crawford is, but look her up. But she wouldn't be able to administer the city. The requirements of the position are, or the duties of the position are in the city charter, are the city code. The thing that was not in there, which I was amazed to find out, is the requirements for the city manager are not there. However, I suspect there's a government code somewhere that kind of steers in the right direction for what is required for a city manager. So I think it's just a waste of time. I think the guy needs to get out there and start doing his stuff. Forget about what the people have to say. Like I gave you, and I don't say that very often to you.
You've never said it.
No, no, that's what I'm saying. I don't think, I don't think this is a way to hire a city manager. Thank you.
Sir, I want to respond to that, too, also. We are not asking you who to hire.
No.
We are asking, what kind of qualities would you like to see in a city manager?
Well, I already gave mine.
Wait a minute, let me finish. Let me finish, because we know what the requirements are. But we wanted to know, and I can't believe anybody would say, "I don't need to give you any input." Well, I appreciate that, but we want input all the time. And so if you don't want to come, sir, you don't have to, but I would like those people who want to to show up. And please.
Dave, I wanted to, let me address that, because I'm working directly, I've been kind of tasked and volunteered and working with Mr. Mathis, the recruiter that's going to be helping do this. This was, this was an idea that actually he brought up, and he's been doing this for
I believe you, because he's a psychologist.
So this is strictly an adjunct. There is the formal code. On top of that, then there is the formal job description, and then on top of that, he has interviewed each of the councils at length and will continue to. This is just one little piece of the pie where the public can give their input. It's not necessarily a determinant, it's just a chance to provide input, that's all.
Well, I think it's going to take long enough to find somebody, so the better, sooner we get started, the better.
Yeah, okay.
We are started, and Mr. Martin and I are on that committee that are working it, as well as all the council. Okay, is there any other public comment, please?
I didn't know we could comment back on public comment, because I would have addressed Mr...
Go ahead.
No, because I took the great offense to the flag and slavery issue, but I'll deal with it afterwards.
All right. Hi, Mike.
Hello. My name's Mike Senaut, and I'm here to promote a plan for four different projects. They're actually separate projects because they involve different agencies, BLM, county, city, Caltrans. I've handed this project out to all of you, so I hope you've had a chance to read it. I'll be happy to come and meet with you or make a presentation to committees as needed. If you have any questions, I'll give you my phone number. And if you'd like a brief description, there are, the first project I call the Highway 395 BLM Cabana Project. And that's designed to give us some visibility up on Highway 395. Most people don't realize that 395 has more passerby traffic than Highway 14. There's approximately, if you look on page eight of the plan, there's 2,950 vehicles that pass by Ridgecrest on 395 every day, and there's only 2,750 that pass by on Highway 14. I like to... I like to, to frame this whole discussion to have our, our view of Ridgecrest and our front door being South China Lake Boulevard coming in from Highway 395. This is our last chance to develop and make a nice entry into our town. Right now, South China Lake Boulevard is maintained by the county. They come in with a road grader and scrape the shoulders of the road, and we have basically a garbage-lined entrance into our town. It's been that way for years and years and years. They just pile it up in the mountains on the sides of the road, and it doesn't get taken away. So the idea is to have a, have an entrance that is beautified, and part of it is bike paths and off-road vehicle paths and cabanas at the BLM entrances. There are actually four BLM roadheads from Ridgecrest leading into the Rodham Acre Hills. Those are the only four legal access points for off-road vehicles. So the, the idea starts with cabanas, cabana up on Highway 395 at the Brown Roadhead. That could be a tourist information kiosk, too. I've already made a presentation to the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the RACVB, and I've made a presentation to the BLM, the chief, and will, I'm on the agenda for next week's BLM roundtable meeting. It's been very favorably received. The idea is to build cabanas and give us some visibility up on 395, and also have cabanas and further improvements at the four roadheads. There's one at Brady up by the water tank. There's one at Downs Road. There's one at Sunland up by the community college, and then there's one east of town at Javas. Those four roadheads could have cabanas and, and serve the BLM's need to provide access to the lands and the Rodham Acre Hills. The second project, the Business Route 395 Project, people don't realize that this is the only business route on Highway 395 in the entire stretch, all the way up to Canada. It's federal highway fund-eligible. All of these projects are fundable. If, if everybody I've talked to, and I've talked to a lot of people about this, they're all fundable, they're all doable. It's basically bike paths, street improvement, and, and cabanas. So it's a fun project. The Business Route 395 Project is essentially creating a nice entrance by resurfacing, similar to what was, what was done on Red Rock up from Johannesburg to, to the South China Lake Boulevard entrance. They resurfaced and did all the shoulder work. That can be done for $250,000 a centerline mile, and then beginning at the, the White Tank or the, the White Star or the Water Tank, I envision Class 1 bike paths and off-road vehicle paths that mitigate dust all the way into Albertson's. I also envision... Oops. Okay, well, we'll just skip over the Mahan Street project and then final project, but anyway, if anybody has any questions, I have some extra copies of this here, and thank you.
Mike, everybody has been given the, given that project. I know it's gone to staff, and we are asking for some input from them so we can proceed further in where to go.
Okay.
I think you've done a remarkable job, a lot of work, and I've seen great comments from the public on it, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Now we have much more work to go.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to hold this up so the TV camera can see it?
Where's the TV camera?
Up there in the booth. No, 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 up here.
This?
Yeah.
No, it's, the camera's over here.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry.
They won't be able to read it anyhow.
It's hard to see. It basically shows the map, the idea of the bike paths, the cabanas.
Mike, get back to the, if you're going to talk, get back to the speaker, because on TV, they won't be able to hear it.
The, this is Mahan Street. This is South China Lake Boulevard. Mahan is a, is a problem street, but it's a major connector street between South China Lake Boulevard and Inukinn, like Downs and Norma. So this is a bike path. This is a bike path. This is bike paths. Off-road vehicle paths here on Downs, on Springer. Springer's a major dust problem. Anybody that lives in the Ridgecrest Heights area, when the sun comes up and an off-road vehicle goes across Springer, the entire area, across the assisted living and Walmart is covered with dust. So this is a, this is a baby step possibility where we could just simply take care of Springer Road with dust mitigation and gravel and 15 mile-an-hour signs. I've already met with the police department on that little project, so, anyway.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Seem.
Hi, my name is Sophia Merk, and I come before you tonight. I'd like to applaud Mike Senaut for bringing this presentation to you guys. I would like to see the city actually agendacize this, because not only is it going to provide safe thoroughfares by providing safe ways for some of the children that ingress and egress the BLM lands, but it's also going to help with the dust mitigation in this area. The, a lot of the funds are available through air quality funds. There's CHP funds that are available. There's, there's, there's all kinds of funds out there. But what we, what we need from you is a letter saying that you, you think this is a good project. Go ahead with it, and let us take it up to the next, next, next group, the county, so they can start putting it into the zoning laws.
I was going to ask for it to go to the Org Committee.
The what committee?
The Org Committee, so that we could follow up and make some recommendations, because there's no way all five of us can make comment on it, so we need to send it to committee and bring it back so we can go then to council.
I know it's, I know that it's gone to, to some of the life quality committees, and I would like to see it go forward. I really would. And I, I would ask...
Well, you've already done it.
Yeah. I would ask that the, this council agendacize this at a future day.
Oh, it's got to go to committee first.
At a future day. And, and get it on the calendar. Let's, let's get it going. It's so great for the kids. It really is. Thank you.
Peggy, she just came to the Quality of Life Committee and during public comment asked if we had received it.
Okay, so it wasn't on the agenda.
No.
Okay. I would like to send it to Org, because I think that's the place it could go where you could spend the time with it. The other committees are so full that it's hard to send it to them and have them give the due credit that it is for the project. Makes it sound like Org isn't doing anything, but our, it's a wave, and that isn't where, that's where we are now. So, okay, sir, I'm sorry. Mike?
Good evening, Council Mike Neal. Just a two-sentence comment on what Mr. Porter had to say struck my mind. There's a statement that kind of summarizes what free speech should be all about, and it basically goes like, "Free speech is more about being able to say what people don't like than just being able to say, you know, whatever you want to say." If you can't get up and say pretty much whatever you want to say in public assembly regardless, you know, outside of common bounds of decency, of course, which, you know, most men of any strength can take care of that problem pretty quick, need to be able to say whatever you want to say in public assembly and in public meetings. So, you know, people coming up to foment violence because they don't like what's been said is just strictly, you know, another way to try to squash it, and people feel like, you know, they have the right to do that. But unfortunately, you know, in the Charlottesville case, you see where the police forces kind of stand down and let the violence occur. I'm not, there's conjectured reasons for that, but, you know, I don't think we'll ever have to worry about this in Ridgecrest, but if we do, and somebody's up there saying something I just really, really don't like to say, I'll still stand up for the right to say it, because that's a basic fundamental right. Now, a couple of things that I'd like to congratulate some people on. I put in a request to get information on what I noticed in the Finance Department, DWR, in expenditures to its Wildrose Technology or Manufacturing. And Captain McLaughlin called me and gave me further information beyond what I was provided from, from Finance, and found out that this was something they had discovered where they could rework their old Ford Crown Victorias pretty much completely over from bumper to bumper and end up saving quite a bit of money. I believe that the cost was around $25,000, $6,000 as opposed to, which you can't even get them. The newer ones are way more than that, and when they bought them, I think the cost was well over $45,000. So appreciate the cost savings that the police department discovered there for the city, and trustfully, they can find more efficient uses for the rest of the money they saved on that. I also did get some action from Public Works to get the high-growing sagebrush at the intersection of Bowman and Downs chopped off on the one side, which I, you know, drove up and sat at the stop sign and verified was a side obstruction. So that's finally now down. I wish it had happened quicker, but it did, it did just happen, so seeing as how we've had, I don't know, four accidents in recent history at that intersection, and I would encourage them, as I did Mrs. Harker in our conversation, I don't believe there is a flashing light kind of a stop sign there. I think that would be a big help to get the people trailing back and forth on Bowman to go ahead and actually execute a good stop there, just, you know, gets their attention a little better. Now, something I sent out, and it was kind of late in the day, the council, you may not have had a chance to look at it, and it's still kind of in the works in California Assembly, and this is about Senate Bill 649, which has been back and forth and back and forth, and I verified today it was in committee, but this is, this is a problem bill, and I want to bring this up because I'd like the public to hear about this. This, this very seriously concerns them, and it's to basically give the communications giants carte blanche to come in and, and put the repeater boxes that they want to put in for the new, newer cellphone technology, which is what they're calling 4G and mostly 5G is actually the much newer one, and that's because the technology is different, and they're shooting for all this huge bandwidth and data transmission capability. Problem is, California League, California cities has a lot on this. It's on their website about it. They've even got an opposition letter, form letter kind of, you know, formatted that that city could fill out. But I'll highlight some of the problems with this bill. It ties the hands of local government by prohibiting review of small cell wireless antennas and related equipment. It shuts out the public because it gives, it basically gives them a waiver from CEQA, which I think is very, very egregious in this particular instance, and then it causes problems for the cities being able to actually recap revenue from these companies. Now, the CEQA thing really is bad, because these technologies, when you study them, these, these are millimeter-wave wireless technologies, and they're pretty high-powered, and they're going to be basically distributed, and there's going to be a lot of them throughout the city if they put this technology in. Now, long-term exposure to millimeter-wave radiation will cause a lot, a host of problems if this has been studied actually for quite some time. One of the primary ones is, of course, cataracts, and for the people not to be able to voice their concerns through the CEQA process, I think is heinous on the part of the California legislature, and the city needs to pick out against this. Of course, you're going to have to look it over and decide for yourself, but we need to have, we need to voice in this before they just give them a freelance, just here, go at it and do it without having to even work with the cities at all.
Mike, can you wind it up?
I'm done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a question.
Please.
So, Mike, no, that was a hot topic at the League of Cities, and they are, I'm going over my notes from the meeting, but the League is very opposed to this, and Laura Morales is heading up and very, very instrumental with this. They have studied it, and if they're, in fact, I, if there is a letter, I, it's on my, I have four stars here to, if, is there a letter, a form letter from the, from the League that we can do?
Yes, there is. You can fill it out on their website.
Well, I'm going to look at it some more.
And the proper representatives fill it out.
But that's something that, that I will probably be willing to champion and do. I think it's good. The League doesn't want it.
Yes, and it's not a, it's very bad. I don't know why they're doing this, other than, of course, money always talks.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Is there any other public comment?
I got one thing, Madam Mayor, because I, we were, I was told when we went to the training that we weren't supposed to make comments on public comments, but I just wanted to make one quick comment, and that was the rationale that Mr. Porter made reference into slavery and the freedom of speech, because the acts that took place back in the '60s with the freedom of people protesting and doing it in a very non-violent way was, was not projected in the same reality as to what just took place in Virginia. Because we know in 1956, the representation of that flag took on a new racial term and tone, so to say that it means nothing, maybe not to all people, but to some people, is a very strong offensive thing. So I just wanted it to be noted that I totally disagree with that.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? Okay, then we're going to go to council announcements. I'll start down here. Lindsay?
Yes, I have one. My very close friend Julie Erdl, she's battling cancer, and some local artists have gotten together, and they're going to host a benefit concert for her on September 1st and 2nd at 6:30. Tickets are available at Red Rock, and all of the proceeds go to help pay for medical expenses, so she's currently going, undergoing treatment out of town for that, so, thank you.
Thank you. Ross?
No, I don't have anything on here.
Okay. Eddie? Mike?
Outside of the one with the young man that made mention of the college one, I think that's a great event to get involved in.
I had one, and it was brought up by Mr. Matthews. So those of you who are aware, at from 5:30 to 7 o'clock on the 30th, we'd like to hear from you about what qualities, what you'd like to see were strength in our new city manager as we go through our search. I would also like to remind you that there's some out front, and they're going to be all outside in the packets. We're making your point, making it count. It's good for council. It's also good for the public, so it is available there. Okay, no other announcements, and I will go into the consent calendar. Item number two, we have polled item number three. So item number two is proposed action to approve draft minutes of the City of Ridgecrest City Council Successor Redevelopment Agency Financing Authority Housing Authority Regular Meeting Dated... Oh, I guess I need to ask first before I read it. I'm going to read them, and then I ask what we want polled. A regular meeting dated August 2nd. Number three, we polled. Number four, proposed action to approve a resolution approving the final balancing charge, change order, authorizing the city manager to authorize, to authorize, authorizing the city manager to sign the notice of completion on the concrete work for the Inukinn Transit Hub Station, authorizing the city clerk to file the notice of completion and authorizing the release of the retention of the amount of, you didn't, you, you gave it to me in words. Okay, I'm going to do the amount of $2,886.65. Oh, you did. The contractor, CLC Construction Incorporated, 30 days after the recording of the notice of completion. Is there any items anybody wishes to pull? Okay, seeing none. Motion?
I move approval of item two and four.
Second.
Mr. Mauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, item number five. Mr. Culp?
Excuse me, Madam Mayor?
Pardon me?
I have a question.
Is number three going to be addressed later in another meeting, or what?
No, it's been polled.
Yeah.
I know, it's been polled. When you poll them, you usually discuss them individually, so...
No, it was deleted from the, from the agenda.
From the agenda.
My question is, is it going to appear later in another meeting?
Not, not in this meeting.
In a different meeting.
Yes.
In different meeting. Thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
The item has been polled and canceled. Thank you. For another meeting. Okay, number five, sir.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, council members, this item before you tonight is to request the council to approve a resolution for a RSTP funding project that we've selected for the city. RSTP is the grant program for the Regional Surface Transportation Program. Staff has selected the west side of Downs to be eligible for this particular RSTP project. What we're asking council is to approve a resolution to meet the requirements of Kern Cog for submittal of this application. We are looking at submitting an application requesting Kern Cog to fund the amount of $770,573 against the project in which the city will have a matching fund of $898,188. The funding for this particular project, of course, from the RSTP program, we're suggesting that the encumbered carryover from Measure V and Measure L be utilized for the, for the city's funding portion. The remaining amount, the balance would also come out of the Measure V, Measure V funding. The, this project is still subject to review and approval by Kern Cog. There are certain criteria that Kern Cog has in evaluating a project. This is not a for certain project. The funds, however, every two years, we're eligible for those funds, and that is generally a fixed amount that comes to the city. So we're trying to apply those to the, to the South Downs project, particularly the west side of South Downs. As you may recall, we already have a RSTP grant for the east side of Downs, which we're under design for right now. We're in our environmental review process, our environmental compliance, and so we'd like to supplement that existing RSTP project with what we're proposing here for the west side of Downs. Staff would then ask that the council move to approve the resolution and allow the city engineer to be the designate to execute and file the application with Kern Cog.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions from council?
I have two. On the second to the last paragraph on project justification, it says this project does not, does not what?
I've got, I've got another typographical error that I have to correct in there, Councilman Mauer. There is a error also directly above that in the second paragraph, the last sentence. I have to correct that lineal footage there. So staff is aware of some changes that have to be made in that.
But can you just say what it is?
What is?
Yes, it's, yes, the actual distance, they will be 2,640 lineal feet for that reach. We're calling that west side a major bottleneck in our Downs corridor, that that particular reach is the only reach between the South China Lake Boulevard and Inukurn Road. That reach is the only unimproved reach which we feel is a constraint within our city, a bottleneck, and it has the third highest volume of traffic within our city. So, but thank you, Councilman Mauer.
But what is that sentence supposed to say? This project does not?
This, let me tell you that this justification is, we use the template of the, of the east side of Downs. We used that as a template to craft this, and we think that this was just an oversight that we had left over from the template that we used for the east side.
So those four words should be struck?
This is an incomplete sentence which we have to take care of.
Is it on the resolution?
No, it's on the project justification.
Then this project is not?
No, it's not the resolution. I think that sentence was supposed to say something, but it doesn't say anything.
Yes, it's, it's, it's an error.
So just scratch it off.
We used a template, yeah, it's, the word processor bit us on that one, Councilman.
And the other question I have is, I know we paid the money under protest to get the polls moved, is there any indication from Edison when that's going to happen?
Yes, I did receive a preliminary, or I should say, an initial invoice, an updated invoice and agreements for the relocation of the polls. I did go through the agreement and the invoice, and I found some errors in that, and I've returned that back to Southern California Edison. And the last email I received, I was supposed to get the updated and corrected invoice and agreements today, but I did not, so I anticipate them yet this week.
And have we contacted the company that has to pay the cost of that one? The senior housing?
Yes, AMG. We have not. There are some potential complications with the AMG arrangement. According to Southern California Edison, if we supplement our project with private funds, we're subject to what's called an ITCC. It's a, it's a, it's a income, it has to do with the interest, or I think it's the, something to do with taxes. ITCC, Income Tax Contribution Component, I believe is the correct words for that acronym. But I'm told by Southern California Edison that if we utilize private funds, then we'd be subject to them having to increase or add the ITCC component to the estimate. And it's Income Tax Contribution Component, I believe is what it's called. So there is a detail that still has to be worked out with AMG.
I'm not sure I understood that. You're saying they care where, how we pay it, rather than that it is paid?
Yes, there is a, if Southern, Southern California Edison indicates to me that, yes, if there are private funds which supplement the project, then we're subject to having them, Southern California Edison, apply this ITCC component to the cost estimate.
So if it was $50, they would add $50 to our bill to cover the money that was paid by that?
It's because of taxes.
Well, I don't know what formula or what the tax component would be, but I do know that we have indicated that that would have to be added to their, to their invoice to cover any income tax contribution that might be made.
Can you, can you email, because I, there was some discrepancies with one of the other meetings about the cost of one of these polls that was like, huh, and can, when you get the final detailed cost on that, can you send that, can you send that to all of us?
I will request that from Southern California Edison. However, in the past, when dealing with Southern California Edison, when requesting a detailed cost estimate, they will not provide you one. They, they have their reasons, I guess proprietary reasons, why they don't issue detailed cost estimates, but I certainly will ask for one.
Now, if we're paying the bill, I think we might know what we're paying for, right?
You'd think.
But because, I mean, one of those polls, I just, and I, don't quote me, but I, so maybe I shouldn't say, but I mean, I heard all sorts of things about the magic polls, and one of them was real magic and real special, and I think I brought it up, I'd have to look at the tapes, but one of the polls was like three times the cost, like 600,000 or something, and I said, what on God's earth are we talking about? But then it switched, and then some other things happened, and I would like a detailed estimate. If we have a problem with SCE not giving us detailed information, billing information that we're trying to pay for, Mr. Culp, then I think that's another issue we need to take up with some other legislative body. We need to have a definitive bill, exactly what the costs are, and then if they can't give it, we'll, we'll take it up line and see what we need to do to get it.
Yes, I understand, sir, but.
The expensive poll was the one that this company's supposed to pay for.
Right.
But now Edison's telling us we can't get the money from them without paying a tax?
Well, then you could just charge that other company. I mean, it's because of taxes.
We pay for it, then we get reimbursed.
Right.
Does that get around it?
But the fee would be higher because they have to charge taxes. It's all about taxing agencies is probably what it has to do with, and so the city, we don't pay taxes like, you know, other entities.
That's correct, we're exempt. We don't have to pay the ITCC tax contribution, and, but if there are private monies, then it's my understanding, then they have to apply that.
Mike, are you still?
Well, no, and I don't, I don't think, because I had received a call from a constituent earlier also that mentioned something about something that was printed on their, on the actual SCE bill concerning these polls. I don't have the details, because they called me 20 minutes before this meeting, and I don't need to say who, what, but I, I'm going, what? She said there's some kind of a paragraph on her recent bill from SCE talking about some of the hazards of these polls, and the dirt around the polls might, might be caustic and so forth. I mean, she was going through it, I'm going, holy Toledo. So I'm bringing this to your attention. It's new to me, just heard it. But, but, and the attorneys here also, but I'd like to know what this magic paragraph is that surrounds the magic pole that can be twice the cost of the other magic pole that we have to pay for. So I'd like to know what that, what all of that is.
I can tell you that when we were looking at the AMG project and when they were preparing their improvement plans, one of the conditions of approval was for them to relocate their polls. And Southern California Edison did prepare a cost estimate for the relocation of the polls. The major pole, of course, sits right on the corner of Church and Downs, and that particular pole has a, has transformers on it, has a streetlight. It's a, there are two poles that are actually that occupy that position. It also serves distribution as well as transmission and has guy wires going in every direction. There's a lot of spaghetti hanging in the air off of that pole. That particular pole was estimated at $389,000.
But, Mike, you're saying that?
That's the pole this company's supposed to move, but then I guess tax gets involved.
All right, we just, I think it's fair to say that we need to have it very specific and right.
So I have a quick question. With this part, is this like the total for the whole street then finally? Because we already have the east side, so is this, this amount is all that's left to make this finally be the, for, in addition to the money we're spending to the, for the pole relocation, then this is all of the money? There won't be another set of money down the road that's asked for?
Staff does anticipate coming back to council to, for supplementary funding for the east side of Downs. At the time, the RSTP application was made for the east side of Downs, there was some doubt of the city's ability to supplement that project, and therefore we designed the project around the base figure of what RSTP was going to provide the city. We had to, in essence, reverse, reverse engineer to the dollar that was going to be made available to us. If we are to complete all of Downs, we would have to supplement the east side of Downs. This particular application has the west side of Downs in its totality.
So then how much more will we need for the east side to make Down Street whole?
Staff, we're not prepared to, currently we're in the preliminary stages of our design, and that will, when we proceed further into our design, we'll be able to prepare a much more accurate cost estimate. But it is, it is staff's intention to come back to council to, to see if there is a possibility of supplementing that project to complete the east side of Downs.
How much is already allocated for the east side?
The east side RSTP is very similar to what's indicated in your staff report for this west side. It's on the order of 680-some thousand dollars.
It's an expensive road.
You know, when we discussed this before you decided to divide it up, that was 600 and then 700,000, it was like 100, 1.0, you know, whatever it was, million. And I'm going, holy Christ, that was a lot of money. I'm glad we separated it because it's easier to handle, but there was the idea that we can get that side done, which has to be done because of moving the polls and then getting the streets, so. And then with the Kern Cog money, that made it a doable thing. So I appreciate letting staff, giving us that information. I'd like to know how we are going to prepare for the west side if indeed the concern was we didn't have enough to match our share of those funds. Is, can that money, do we have a fund for that in mind?
As far as a secondary project, in the event this project is not approved, what we might elect for another project? We've had some thoughts about trying to do more of improvements to some of our arterials, and the one, the one street that came to mind, I think in staff's discussions, was we were thinking about some of the improvements that still need to be made on Drummond for the raised median for the new schools that have been constructed there. There's some traffic signal work that has to be done at that intersection, plus a raised center median for Drummond. So that was of consideration. But staff felt our needs were far greater for our Down Street project than suggesting the Drummond Street project.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion or questions? Is there any questions from the public on this item?
So the carryover was $400,000, right?
We just got a revised figure for the carryover for the encumbered amount that's carried over from Measure V and Measure L, and it is going to be much closer to the 617,852. That'll be the carryover. We just received that figure this afternoon.
So then the extra couple hundred thousand is just coming out of?
It'd have to come out of Measure V.
Okay, public comment?
Yes. My name is Sapi America. Part of the RSTP funds would be applicable to the safe routes that were mentioned in those four projects. Those four projects were given to Tennis Spear two months ago and to some of the city council members. I was wondering what it takes to get some of the RSTP funds to projects, to project levels from your office.
Well, the, the biggest thing is to be able to identify all the elements of work to define the scope of work, and then to start looking at cost estimates for that particular reach of work. There are some criteria that RSTP has for.
I understand that.
Making sure that it fits our criteria, so that, that is really about it, is defining the project and putting a engineer's cost estimate to all those elements within.
Some of those numbers and figures are provided for you in that document. I know that you have a copy of it, so. It was presented to the city manager a couple of months ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Since I didn't get a chance to really mention the Mayhem Street project, which
Since I didn't get a chance to really mention the Mahan Street project, which, Lauren, I think you're available, or you talked to me about, that, that project would qualify. In other words, Mahan isn't going to ultimately be developed as a four lane. It, it'll probably stay as a two lane. And the unfinished portion on the west side that is in the county would be ideally suited for Class 1 bike paths as well as shade benches like exist on the Bowman Road, Class 1 bike paths that end at Downs. But that project won't increase capacity. It'll involve substantial dust mitigation, and it, the only unfinished portion of Mahan technically is between Springer and Bowman. And I think that's a serious problem. It's not legally a road. It's only 20 feet wide at certain sections. It's not striped. There's, there's no mileage signs between Ridgecrest Boulevard and Springer. So there's two miles of road on Mahan Street that have no, no speed limit signs. I encourage all of you, next time you come into town, take a look at the BLM roadhead up on Brown. Look at either side of the road as you come down towards Mahan, past the water tank, and then make a left-hand turn onto Mahan Street and drive to Ridgecrest Boulevard. And that's all you need to do to see what a mess that is. People are literally walking down the middle of the street because there's no sidewalks. There's no lanes. You're playing a game of chicken. You're, you're literally driving on the edge of the dirt if two cars are passing each other. So that's a dangerous road. It's a, there's a liability issue that's shared by the county and the city because they don't agree who should maintain Mahan Street. So I think if any, any roadway deserves some, some serious looking at, it would be Mahan Street, especially between Ridgecrest Boulevard and Springer Road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Stan Ratora. A question regarding the RSTP funds. Can, can you tell me what year, what the timing of those funds is? I mean, are we talking FY '18 funds, FY '19 funds?
Yes, we, we currently have a 100% complete set of plans on this project. So we have improvement plans already prepared. The, the, the task would be to take the improvement plan and draft it such that the contractor had clear direction on what the extent of his work would be for the RSTP or this westerly portion of work. So, we would take our, our 100% complete plans and redraft them such that there's clear direction of construction necessary to accomplish this particular grant.
I'm sorry. Let me clarify, clarify what I was asking. So I, I don't think you're heading in the right direction. What I'm asking is, when, if we apply for the RSTP funds now, when will the RSTP funds actually be available?
I, I was trying to paint a picture to get there.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, Stan. Due to the fact we have the plans ready and can easily manipulate them or edit them, we were going to ask for consideration from Caltrans to move funds forward. We can do that. We can ask for funds to be moved forward. So, we're anticipating that this would be a summer project for the '18 fiscal year, for this, this next summer is when we would anticipate being able to, be able to go out to bid and, and construct this portion.
Okay. So the earliest would be next, summer of next year?
Yeah. We've, we've got a early estimate for Southern California Edison to be relocating poles. They've indicated that they could possibly get them done by March. And there's a, a very little reason why we couldn't have this out to bid and already awarded right off the heels of Southern California Edison relocating the poles.
Okay. So, all of FY '18 will be pretty much done, and all of the money coming from Measure V for this FY '18 will be in the coffers. And, and what I would like to suggest is that rather than using money that's already in the bank, that is, that was the FY '16 carryover and the FY '17 carryover, which frankly, I, the FY '16 carryover was over four, a little over $400,000. And based upon some of the numbers I've seen from the budget from last year, I gotta believe that there's gonna be a good deal more than $600 and probably closer to $1 million of, of carryover for now. And what I'm thinking is that having that money in the bank and not doing road maintenance of that money, all that does is waste the time that we could be doing maintenance on roads. And so I think there's a lot of people in town that would much rather see us use the FY '18 Measure V money to supplement or match this particular project. And there ought to be more than enough there. And use the money that we've got sitting basically in a general fund. I think all the carryover is in the general fund, if I'm not mistaken. Is use the money that we have that is available to actually work on some streets that are badly in need of maintenance now, because there's no point in just having money sit there when we could actually be using that money. Second of all, I was curious, is there a plan for sharing the Measure LV funding between maintenance and construction? Do we have, has, has the council made any type of policy or financial plan associated with Measure V funding between? Because I guess my, my point is, and I'll just so that, make it short, is that doing construction with Measure L funds means it doesn't go very far. And because construction costs a lot of money. And I think most people really believe that the Measure L funds was going to be to maintain existing roads rather than construct new additional roads when we can't actually afford to maintain the ones we got. I, I fully understand that that road we're working on is something that we've been talking about for 20 years, and it needs to be done. But I also think that the city needs to have a policy on how we're going to use the Measure L funds and, and how much of it's going to go for reconstruction or construction versus maintenance. Because if we continue, and I'm not, I'm not against this particular project, but it, every year, we use $600 or $800 or $1 million on construction. There won't be any Measure L money for maintenance at all. We've, we've got to, we've got to somehow set some guidelines as to what is the Measure L funding for, how is it going to be used. And, and even though I totally support the Downs project, it is, in my mind, totally inconsistent with what the purpose of the Measure L funding is, especially when you look at the way, the, the amount of money that's going to support the general fund out of Measure L has gone up significantly in the last years. The amount of money going into Measure V, that, pardon me, the roads, has gone down dramatically. And I think if we continue on the road we're going, all the money's going to be spent on construction, and there won't be any money for maintenance. Thank you.
So, does the city have a policy like that, Mr. Culp?
Not to my knowledge. I do know that Measure L and Measure V was primarily for maintenance. And, but, you know, it's totally at, at council's discretion on how they wish to proceed with these grant programs.
This, this is the only construction project we really have, right?
Yeah.
I mean, we don't have a, we don't plan on a new construction project every, every year. Once we get this one done. And this is the third most traveled street in Ridgecrest. So it'll affect a lot of Ridgecrest residents.
If you look at the next item on our agenda, you'll look that there's a CMAC program, which has got a lot more grant money and a lot less match money. But again, that's two, that's the second item on tonight's agenda where we're taking Measure L money to supplement the construction. And even though, again, in this one particular case, I mean, I'm not saying this is the, you know, something that we're going to do constantly because you can't. We, we flat can't. In the last two years, I believe the amount of money that went to the general fund went up to like $2 million, when we were only getting $2.7 million total on Measure L. So you're talking about a, a total of, of $700 that's available a year for maintenance. And if you use 500 or 600 of that for construction, there simply isn't any. I mean, the, the math is pretty simple. So we, in my mind, we need to have a policy whereby we say we're going to set a certain amount of money aside for actual maintenance, which in my mind was the purpose of the Measure L funds. Thank you.
I just need to clarify on...
Please, go ahead.
Saying, there's always money that we spend on the street's maintenance.
Get a little closer.
Especially for FY '17, we actually spent over $610,000 for our street's maintenance. And the actual amount that was spent on capital construction is only $115,000.
Okay.
And in, there's always money set aside for street's maintenance every year. If he, he wants the information, I can give it to him. And I know there is also a budget for this year for street's maintenance.
Would you do that, so he has that correct information?
Yes, I can give that information.
Thank you.
Can you clarify, though, what he was talking about? Rather than encumbering the funds right now, can we not wait and encumber the funds down the road and use the funds that are available right now for more road maintenance? Or does it have to be encumbered? Do we have to, for the RSTP, encumber the funds so that we show that we have it?
Well, actually, I don't transfer the money. It's, when we have construction, I mean, street's maintenance that needs to be done, those money gets used to, to the one that has to be done now. For in that, this case, it just like, I keep track of it to make sure that when the, the project is getting ready to start, that money is available. So it's not really gets put aside in the bank so that no, we cannot spend it. It's available for, if there's, is, is a budget right now for street's maintenance, that money's going to go to it first.
Okay. Then, Lauren, I have a question. Because the amount of traffic, like, our level of service on this road isn't an issue. It's just a consistency issue. Is that why we're doing this project? Because we don't really have to have four lanes. It's just that it's already four lanes on the other two sides. Because I know from my planning, that level of, that traffic volume doesn't require warrant four lanes of traffic. Correct?
There, there is the possibility of, of doing a smaller project that would still be able to accomplish the volumes that we see there. A two-lane road, according to Caltrans, is, is capable of handling over 12,000, average day traffic of 12,000.
You also have a security or a safety problem there because you're coming down Down Street, you get to Ridgecrest Boulevard, the right lane is supposed to make right lane only. I've had people race by me and cut over, and that's a safety deal. You're going to have some accidents there because they're, they're cutting into a lane, they're cutting off of a lane that doesn't exist anymore and cutting off traffic.
Yes. Staff does recommend that we proceed with the master plan proportions of the roadway, and that certainly is a, the, one of the safety issues that we're looking at.
But I just also note that you had mentioned before talking about the safety concerns of the school. And when we widen it to four lanes, you're going to be increasing the speeds of the vehicles going through there because there will be more capacity. Traffic calming tends to, the first thing they do is narrow down the road to slow the vehicles down. So, I mean, it's a lot of money that we're spending on a road that we don't really need. It's just something that's kind of nice to have. And I understand what you're saying, but you can put a, a barrier there to prevent that from happening. I'm just, okay...
What kind of barrier would you put?
You can put a little curb there that keeps people from being able to do that kind of stuff. But I'm just saying we should...
In the middle of the road?
Along the lane, you can. But, all I'm saying is, I know that this project, I mean, this is a lot of money for, I mean, you're saying we, it's nice because we split it up, but we split it up by maybe a year. But we're still putting out a lot of money for something that we don't have to have, when a lot of our streets, like Stan is saying, are in, I mean, the reason why Down Street's in such horrible condition is because we've never maintained it. If we resurfaced it, that would make a lot of the complaints go away. It's just because we've never resurfaced it because we thought we were always going to build it to four lanes. And so, rather than always counting on it being four lanes, maybe we should think about, instead of using all of this money on this one project, using it differently so that we can get more streets fixed up all around town. Because $800,000, that would be, if you remember back to my pavement, the slurry seal machine, that would be enough to resurface a lot of streets in our city.
Could you want to answer?
We got those ugly barricades.
Well, I'm not saying, no, you could, you could build two-lane road with a median, but it would be a lot cheaper than building a four-lane road with a median. It's just, we've always kept ourselves in this box following the master plan. And it's just an idea that we could, because traffic does, is no, it's half of what capacity, I mean, a four-lane roadway, Lauren, how many vehicles is that? You said a two-lane is 12,000. That's 24,000 vehicles. I mean, that's, when are we going to get to 24,000 vehicles on Downs? I'm just throwing out, and I like to think outside the box. I know it kind of sends people for a loop because we always have our dominoes set up, and I just...
I don't think this is a domino. This is a, clearly a safety issue. I think to have children on those streets trying to cross, whether they can or not, they do, and to have the, a life of, one life is, how much is the life worth?
No, you're not listening to, I'm not saying we need to have a crosswalk there. And you could have a crosswalk if you put the medians in and all that, but you don't need to build it to be a four-lane road. You're actually putting the child's life more in jeopardy by adding two extra lanes for them to cross, and the traffic speeds will be much higher on a four-lane roadway than a two-lane roadway.
But that's why we have the walks, the crosswalks, and the people to get through. I, whether they cross four lanes or two lanes, they're still going to be out in the middle of the street and trying to do that, and somebody is either hurt or killed. Our liability is huge.
I don't understand why you, I, how is building a four-lane road making it safer for them?
I'm not saying it's safer. I'm saying doing it, that you're going to have that issue no matter what you do. It's not going to be safer with a two as opposed to a four, except that. We have those people that drive that street will understand that this is, now we've got the walks. We've got everything. And people are going to have to watch that. Some of what, what we're asking for, I've heard Stan say, and you say, that we need to maintain or, not maintain, what's the word I want to use, improve the quality of these roads that are marginal. And we've heard report after report after report saying trying to fix those roads are not the best way to do it because we need to take care of the ones that haven't deteriorated so much that the cost of fixing is still, or repairing is still within our budget.
I don't think you're, I'm not saying not, I, I think we should do, what I'm saying we should look at is instead of doing a four-lane road, we should be looking at doing an improved two-lane road with the sidewalks and crossings, not just leaving it as it is. I'm saying, as opposed to adding those extra two lanes, which is a significant cost increase to the project, that we look at leaving it a two-lane roadway with adding the safety improvements for the students. And leave, and having it as a two-lane roadway is actually safer in that area than having it as a four-lane roadway, because it's calming the traffic. They're slowing down because it's a bottleneck through there. And I understand...
You already have the curb, gutter, and sidewalk on half of the east side. So what are you going to do? Make it go out?
Make it go out and back in on all the undeveloped area? But, you know, we talk about improving the city. That's an ugly section and, and...
It is an ugly section.
So you're going to tear out the curb and gutter and sidewalk in front of the apartments there and move them out a lane? How are you going to do that?
Why would you have to move it out?
Because it's already wide enough in that section, on that side, for two lanes.
For the four, yeah.
But you could still leave the sidewalk there and use the sidewalk where it is. I mean, there's lots of...
And just close one of the lanes down?
I'm just offering an alternative to spending this amount of money on one, I mean, this is, 2,600 feet of road is causing, costing almost a million, well, I mean, with the, with the RSTP funds, it's over a million dollars for half of the road. So we're talking now it's probably $3 million for 2,600 feet.
Can I ask, Mr. Culp, how did we get to four lanes versus two?
The, uh, all of the...
Wasn't there some type of studies that were done?
Well, all of the Downs corridor, Downs is considered a, a major arterial. Some call it a minor arterial, but actually it has the third highest volume of traffic within our community. The Downs portion is, well, all of Downs has four lanes of travel with, with median. And the master plan calls for four lanes of travel with median for arterials. The, uh, the safety measures relative to a median are, are well-known. Does eliminate or take care of errant or abusive drivers that want to try to do U-turns wherever you have painted medians. So there are certainly benefits by having the raised median to control your traffic. I might also mention that our project does include a crosswalk for the students for the charter school. We have a center refuge area. We have rapid flashing beacons that are going to be there. It will be a, a California MUTCD-approved crosswalk there. So, but the, one of the requirements to meet the MUTCD is that there has to be curb and gutter on both sides of the street and directly into a school grounds. So we will be complying with the criteria there.
In order to get those, the grant money?
In order to be able to have a, a, a legal, safe crossing, it's required that we have curb and gutters on either side and that the crossing be directly into a school grounds. And we're also adding the rapid flashing beacons to alert traffic that there's a school cross, crosswalk there.
But what I'm saying is you could still do all of those things, but rather than constructing a four-lane road with those things, you could construct a two-lane road with those things. I'm just throwing the idea out there because it would be a lot of savings in asphalt and concrete, and you could still have your curb and gutter and crossings. That's just, and that, because we've always stuck with following this master plan. And if you drive down some of these roads, the width of those roads, you can't even tell is this, of, there's no markings on it like on Upjohn. Most people don't even drive on how wide of pavement that is. And it's because we followed the master plan. Well, then, once we have that there, we have to maintain all of that pavement, even though it's not even being used for capacity reasons for traffic to drive on. We've been doing it because the master plan tells us to. Does that make...
It's all, it's also the only other four-lane road that goes all the way north and south to the city. China Lake Boulevard is the only one, and I know a lot of people in town that will stay off China Lake Boulevard because it is so busy. So they want to drive Downs. Norma is not that great of, of street to drive from one end of the city to the other. So that's, I understand what you're saying, but I, I think it's time we make it look decent and make it conform with all the rest of Down Street. You're talking about bottlenecking it down for that half mile and then back up because it's already there, so.
But I'm saying that not just because of saving, but you also understand what I'm saying about the safety of the children. If you widen the road, the speeds will increase through there.
Well, we got a nice motorcycle cop out there that's been pulling people over lately, and I've seen that. They're usually around the school areas when the school crossing time is there. And so...
I might mention, and we also have speed feedback signs planned for that reach as well because of the school in that, in that vicinity. It will be posted as a school zone, and we do have speed feedback signs.
Is there any other public comment? Well, well, Mike is coming up. Is there any other council comment? Okay.
Yes, I guess this new idea is, it's, I hadn't considered it, but now that I've listened to it from a, from a practicum and from an engineering standpoint, I don't know how much of a monkey wrench, it throws in the whole works of things to modify that and just, you know, improve the two lanes. And I under, after thinking, I understand completely how that can be done, that the curbs and gutters can be put in. We have, we have tons of roads around here that don't have curbs and gutter right up to, to the pavement, and you could just have the pavement on the two lanes and then dirt between there and where the curbs and gutters get put in, you could complete the crosswalk. And, and the point of saving a lot of money right now that could go on to improving other ratty streets around town has a lot of merit because of the simple fact that, you know, the PMS study has pointed out that we've got really bad roads, and the longer we wait, the worse they get and the more costly that they get to repair. So, you know, time is costing you exponentially a lot more money to, to deal with those roads. So, uh, I would view that as something like in our engineering discussions on the face over all these years, we're sitting around batting stuff around, and we're kind of going down, down a path, and then somebody throws out, hey, let's, let's think about such and such. And, you know, we just, it's just really simply a matter of just kind of switching gears a little bit and not being so tendaciously locked on to the road you were, you were going down originally and being willing to, to open up your mind a little bit to some new ideas in, you know, basically for the purpose of doing the best good for the citizens in, in Richcrest overall. And, and, you know, I drive Downs a lot and the other four-lane towns, and I just basically think that these streets were way over-engineered. People had, you know, way, way more ambitions. They were all in this grow, grow, grow mode. And, you know, Down Street is, most of the time is almost vacant of traffic except at the peak traffic hours. You're just, you know, it's like going down a city street at 10 o'clock at night a lot of times. That road has got so much more capacity than it really needs that, you know, it's just like super easy to drive because you don't have to worry about encountering traffic very much until, but taking it down to two lanes, there, traffic-wise, doesn't appear to be any problem whatsoever. And, and realistically, if the kids that are going to cross, work only have to cross two lanes, they're going to be, they're going to be safer. It's, there's no getting around that. Crossing four lanes is more dangerous than crossing two lanes, especially going, I know there's no plan to have a stop signs on Down Street at Church Street there. So the traffic is just going to be flowing. You've got, most of these other cross, a lot of, a lot of the crosswalks anyway, otherwise in town are at four-way stops. So crossing four lanes isn't a big deal. Everybody has to stop, and it's easy for the, the crossing guard to deal with. So if it's not going to put an unreasonable delay in getting this going forward, you know, if there's not something where it keeps from being able to get the funding or something to make some mods, I think it would well be worth considering.
Mr. Culp, if we were to go back and say, okay, we're going to re-engineer this whole thing and make it two lanes rather than four, what's the timeframe on the holdup of that? And would we cut our costs in half?
You won't cut your costs in half.
I know that, but I just wanted to...
Well, the, um, the RSTP amount is a, is a fixed amount, and, and that's roughly $670,000. It varies from time to time, year to year. But, uh, you would, if you were to pare it down similar to what we have on the east side of Downs, the RSTP project, you, you would be limiting the amount of improvements to, let's say, certainly a raised center median. You wouldn't be able to accomplish that. Or add an additional lane of travel. You'd probably be able to get your shoulder, a widened shoulder with restoring the existing paving that you have now for the, for the roadway. Probably some signage or barricades or crash barrels to be placed in locations where there might be conflicts. But, uh, you know, it's, it's at, it's at council's discretion. The, uh, the, the funds are, are set, and it's up to the council if you want to go ahead and, and project or not. We can, we can go any way the council so directs.
We've already approved the east side of Downs.
Yes.
And engineering is already done. So I think part of Piggy's question is if we have to re-engineer it to two lanes, how much longer, they're going to have to be re-engineered?
Well, you would have to take the plans and redraft them to give the contractor clear direction on what's, you can do for that $670,000. You would have to have a clear set of bidding documents, bid schedule, and plan to clearly show contractor what his scope of work is for...
Would we still get the same amount of grant money or would that be cut back?
No, the grant money's given. It's fixed.
So we would have to use the full $670,000 even if we're cutting it down?
There would be some matching funds that would be applied to that. We would have to have some smaller portion of matching funds that we'd have to take from Measure V and Measure, or one of the two measures.
To instruct the contractor how to comply to the possible two lanes?
Yes, we'd take our existing plan now and then pare it down. We'd reverse engineer the improvements to the dollars and prepare that plan such that the contractor has clear direction on what he's to do within that, within that budgetary.
And that wouldn't affect time in re-engineering that?
We've got the plans already, I mean, the survey work, everything is done. All the features are shown on our plans now. It's just a matter of paring it down to, and this is all in AutoCAD. So this is, these plans are very easily edited.
What would you do with the curb, gutter, and sidewalk on the east side of Downs when half of it's already there?
Well, the, that would remain. And what you'd have is something similar to what you have out on Richmond Road where you have the BLM widened section of asphalt, but you still have Richmond Road that is still the, the two lanes of travel that we've, that we did as a paving project. You'd simply match your paving into the existing pavement. You'd have a widened section of road there just for that segment of, of Downs, similar to the BLM.
So where would you put the curb, gutter, and sidewalk for the rest of the east side?
Well, you, you would not want to be putting curb, gutter, and sidewalk in unless you're doing the master plan.
So we'd take that part out, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't be finishing the street then?
No, no, you would not.
So the 2,600 feet would have no curb, gutter, and sidewalk on it?
That's correct.
Whereas everything either side of it would.
Right. And I doubt if we would be able to have the crosswalk as well.
Why could it not have curb, gutter, and sidewalk and be a two-lane road?
The curb, gutter, and sidewalk would, would actually be a bottleneck. You'd have all of Downs in four lanes of travel with a 20-foot-wide median in which, if you're paring this project down and wanting curb, gutter, and sidewalk, you'd have a very dramatic taper section to curb, gutter, and sidewalk into a much narrower roadway section.
What's the approximate savings?
It would be staff's recommendation to afford that expense for curb, gutter, and sidewalk for, for, for that particular reach.
What would be the approximate savings of going from a four-lane to a two-lane? I'm not, we're not going to hold it to the dollar.
Yeah. I, I, I can say that for the amount that, the RSTP amount, the grant amount, basically you're going to get your street overlaid what's there now or some sort of treatment to get a longevity out of that, out of that surface treatment. You'll probably get some asphalt dike that will be something to carry water away rather than curb and gutter. You'll probably have signage. There will probably be a widened shoulder, a dirt, a dirt shoulder. And that's about what all I could, I could promise you.
Okay. Can you give me an approximate dollar?
Well, I'm suggesting that we take the, if you want to pare this project down, to simply approve the, uh, the RSTP grant amount and approve the matching funds for that particular grant amount. And we reverse engineer the project to fit that budget. That is exactly what we did on the east side.
Okay. I guess I'm not trying to pin you down, but I am trying to see if, if indeed there is a cost savings. I want us to be, and, and I know it's not fair to say it's going to be, the savings are going to be in half because it isn't going to be. But I, is it going to save a third? Is it going to save, I mean, what do we get for giving up the two lanes? What, how do we save?
Here's what your matching funds would be. If you simply accepted the grant amount of the 670-some-odd thousand dollars, your matching funds amount would be on the order of $89,000. It's the, the formula that's used is, is they funded at a rate of 88% and the city is required to have matching funds in the, in the order of 11, 11% and change. So your commitment would be somewhere in the neighborhood. I'm trying to find my cost estimate here. It's on the order of $89,000. Oh, here it is, yeah. Your $87,000 would be what the city's matching funds would be.
I don't know what that is.
A two-lane road with a median and sidewalks on both sides. So I still don't understand why we couldn't build a two-lane roadway with a median, sidewalks on both sides, curb and gutter.
Well, you already have, have a sidewalk on the east side. So, so you're talking about moving the sidewalk out to a two-lane road instead of a four-lane Or, or you have, or you have a sidewalk coming along a two-lane road that transitions over to a four-lane road where the apartments are, then it transitions back. Guess we don't have to move the power poles.
No, you don't have to move the power poles.
Don't have to move the power poles. We just have those ugly power poles there from now on and sitting out where people are going to, we have someone went into them every once in a while, of course, they're drunk.
Thank God we don't have them drunk till 4:00 AM. You don't know, the state may still passage just because we're against it.
Mr. Matthews, you want to make a comment?
Yes, ma'am. I can't believe what I'm hearing. Lindsay, I appreciate your, your concern, and I understand that the, the two lanes would handle the traffic. However, there's other issues. We've already got the right-of-way on the east side of the, of the road in that area, and there's property owners over there who would like to know where the street, where their curb gutter is, and gutter is going to be, if they ever get around to developing it. Otherwise, you're going to have to abandon that right-of-way over there. And I don't think that's a wise thing to do. This is the only section of this boulevard that we have been... This is the only section of this boulevard that we have been struggling over for well over 20 years, maybe this particular session.
Try 40.
Yeah, 40 is more like it. And I can't believe we're only that far away from getting the whole damn thing completed, and you're sitting here squabbling over a little bit of savings. I mean, savings right now, under certain circumstances, may be a good idea. However, in the long run, I think you need to complete the damn highway or roadway and get it over with. 40 years is too long to wait for anything, even though I've waited longer than that for the lights.
Thank you, sir. Okay, is there any other comment on this? Okay, let's call the question then. All right.
This is typical of real-time engineering. I think some people are not actually getting the picture. You could leave the curb gutter and sidewalks at where the four lanes would be. You don't have to move them in. You could have, like we got in all kinds of places around town, your pavement, and then you just get dirt over to the curb gutter and sidewalks. That would allow you to do the pave-out like was talked about at Richmond Road, over to the curbs right there at church, so you could get, put a crosswalk in place, and it's likely, I don't know, some form of median could be put in there, albeit even a semi-temporal one you could do with asphalt curbing or something like that, if you really, really think that you have to do that, you could leave the concrete. The point is, what was just stated and what we would have to match, we would save about $800,000 of our Measure V money. That's a lot of money, it'd go a long way to, you know, if we didn't have all these other ratty streets around town, it'd be a little bit different matter, but we still got a lot of bad streets, and that's a lot of money that would go towards fixing those. And then later on, you finish off the four lanes on Downs when you get in a little better position with the rest of the streets around town. I would have no problem, you know, I got the same problem everybody else does on Downs, is driving in that ratty asphalt. That's the only problem I have with it. If that was good asphalt, then I'd be fine. It's not a problem necking down to it, and some idiot wants to try to race you around it, you know, that's defensive driving, and so that's not a big deal. You can usually see him going for it, you just slow down and let him around, it's not a big thing. Just having some decent asphalt through that section is really the big problem, and we could solve that and save a lot of money.
Okay.
Mike, this issue's been around, do you remember when it was first brought up, I mean, to do this? No kidding, this has been an issue for how many years?
Probably about 40 years. We postponed it, we postponed it back in the 80s because of those poles.
Those of the magic pole?
We've been kicking it down the road for 40 years.
SDE's been the holdup for years.
I move approval of item six, five, excuse me, five.
Second. Do you wanna do it?
Well, I was gonna say, I would like for Mr. Culp to get a chance to bring us some information back.
Counsel, I am up against a deadline on this. There is a, August 31st is my due date for this particular application. And it does require a council resolution.
If you don't mind me asking, what happens after August 31st, sir?
The August 31st date is the, is our deadline. As far as what they may do, there may be an opportunity to suggest another project, but I know that my deadline for this is that, that our deadline for these funds are for August 31st.
Could we still designate these funds, the RSTP funds, to go to the Down Street project, but we can't, we haven't designated the exact project yet?
We, well, this resolution is going to tell KernCog that yes, we are committed to the project, and that the funds will be encumbered for the project. Now, that doesn't mean we're gonna get the project, they still have to look at it and determine if it meets our criteria. So, and in the event that it doesn't meet their criteria, then we'd have to possibly suggest another project.
We have a motion on the floor, are you all gonna take a vote? Is everybody ready to make their?
Yes, I'm ready to vote.
Mr. Mauer?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
No.
Four ayes, one no, motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda.
This is a kind of a continuation of our grant applications that were required to submit a resolution for approval. These are the congestion mitigation air quality grants, they're called CMACs, their acronym is called CMACs. We've got three projects that we're proposing for these, these potential monies. Now, the CMAC funding is a, it's dependent upon that ratio, the, whatever the project cost is, CMAC or the KernCog picks up 88% of that, and then the city has to come up with matching funds on the order of 11% and change. But the three projects that we have here before you tonight are the paving of the dirt road on the north half of Tamris Avenue from Inyo Street to Cape Park Court. We have paving a dirt road, Dolphin Avenue from South China Lake Boulevard to College Heights Boulevard. Paving a dirt road, West Springer Avenue from South China Lake Boulevard to the south.
So that's just to the south, huh? How far to the south?
I believe that reach goes all the way to Downs. The estimated matching funds for these projects, we're looking at $147,601, and these funds would come from Measure V funding fiscal year 1819 and fiscal year 1920. And as it indicates there, the KernCog is a fixed amount, but it's a fixed ratio, it's 88% actually, rather than just a fixed dollar amount. Now, again, these, we're competing with other communities for these funds. This doesn't mean that we're going to be successful in our application. These applications are formula-driven, which requires you to look at the benefits versus the costs, and so there could be other competing communities that would, could outweigh our benefit-cost ratios for these projects. The, the, one criteria that we have that is going for us is the dirt roads, the mitigation of, it's called the, the parts per million, 10 parts per million component of the application, which is airborne particles, and so that's the way we base our benefit-cost ratio on. So the requirements are the same here, that we must approve a resolution that is submitted to KernCog along with our applications. So staff would recommend that city council approve the resolution and allows QK, which is Quadnoff, Inc., to be the designate, execute, and file the application with KernCog for CMAC funding.
No discussion from council? Is there any discussion from the public?
I did have a question, because he had brought up Mahan a couple of times. Down the road, could Mahan be a possible way that we could get Mahan fixed, doing this air quality, since it's similar to Tamris where it's, you know, basically the lane ends at dirt?
Yes, there is that possibility. We've done that, as a matter of fact, we do have Sunland, which is very similar in nature where the city owns the westerly half of the right-of-way, the county owns the easterly half of the right-of-way, in which we have a CMAC grant for doing Sunland between, I think we're going between Dolphin and Bowman Road. But that also could apply to Mahan. The funds would probably only be available for the city portion of right-of-way unless the county wanted to also submit on a CMAC application for their half of roadway.
The county would still have that right as a member of KernCog also, would they not?
Yes, the county does submit CMAC applications as well.
But not a lot for this area.
No.
Yes, we see it elsewhere. Is there any other discussion from council on this item? Is there discussion from the public?
Stan, report. I have questions on a couple of the two, three projects, two of the three projects. On the West Springer, from South China Lake Boulevard to the south Downs. This is the figure that was provided, and then there's, in the insert, there's a box that, it's a yellow and black box. Is that supposed to be the extent of the project, or am I just assuming, reading something into that that was never intended?
If I'm looking at the same exhibit you are, Stan, there is a dashed yellow and brown area that indicates the project area?
According to the description, it's supposed to go from South China Lake Boulevard to South Downs, and it doesn't go, at least on my figure, it's not clear, it doesn't appear to go to South China Lake Boulevard.
Yes, it, the, we tried to get it over there, but the, the existing asphalt that's there wouldn't qualify for a dust mitigation measure, so it is as shown there, it's the dirt portion that we only qualify for.
It's not really. From South China Lake Boulevard to South Downs, it's 100 or so feet less?
Yeah, the description could be made better there, Stan.
Okay.
What would we do with that?
Well, it, unfortunately, now, what you could do is supplement the project with city funds. If you wanted to supplement the project, there's nothing wrong with applying city funds to piggyback off of your CMAC project to do additional improvements.
Is there another spot in town? I mean, I think, I can't think of the road that runs over behind Home Depot that, like, half of it's dirt, too. That runs, yeah, I mean, isn't there another one that this would be better used?
Well, I'm certain there are other roads. Gosh, last year we did half of Graff, and we did North Warner, there by Compassionate Doctors, so, you know, there are other roadways that can be done.
How do we arrive at choosing this one, I guess?
Well, we solicit opinions from staff members, engineering, and public works. Our superintendent weighs in. We solicit opinions for roadways to see which ones might be possible candidates.
So we do this every year?
Yes, sir.
So maybe, maybe looking at Mahan as a project for next year might be a good idea?
And add this in, add the 100 feet or whatever it is.
We can't ever add the 100 feet because it's already paved. That's what you're saying, right? It doesn't qualify because it doesn't improve your air quality?
So Mahan, well, part of it...
No, this, this project.
Oh, that project, okay.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, it's strictly air quality money, so it's trying to pave dirt roads.
So you gotta get rid of the dirt, not, if there's already asphalt there, then that doesn't count.
Well, actually, Mahan has asphalt, doesn't it?
Well, but part of it, like Tamris.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, I don't think Mahan would qualify for this money, because it's already got asphalt on it.
Yeah, it'd only be for any unimproved areas of Mahan where there's...
It's a crappy road. There are portions of Mahan that are only half a road. There are portions of Mahan that is, that at one point in time had a little asphalt or desert mix, but it's pretty much dirt now, and the other half is totally dirt. So you'd have to go through and try to identify what is city and what is county, and there's nothing wrong with trying to do a joint program or project with the county. If they'd be willing to do it. Yeah, well, I can remember our last supervisor used an awful lot of CMAC money to, to put in roads in the south and west ends of town here. So I, you know, the county would probably be willing to do that. But anyway, you answered my question, and I just wanted to clarify the scope of that project. The, the other one was the Dolphin from, and what it says is College, China Lake Boulevard to College Heights Boulevard, and I guess I have two comments or questions on that. I'm assuming in the one case where it looks like there may be at least some desert mix or semi-asphalt that's old, that's been excluded, so it's not really going to College Heights Boulevard, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
So the scope is actually a couple hundred feet, probably.
Yes, it's that land division, that housing development there that has half-street paving, that would not be eligible.
Okay, can you tell me what the zoning is north of that patched area?
I, I'm afraid I'm at a loss, I would not have that committed to memory.
It seems to me that typically the developer will put in roads for the area that he's developing, and if that is, I mean, that's an area of town that we sort of expect to grow and to go commercial and that kind of thing, and if it does, it seems to me that the developer should be responsible for putting that road in. I wouldn't say the same for the other two, because they're, you know, they don't have the same opportunity, the same benefits, but in that particular area, and by the way, that is 65%, that, the project is 65% of the total, and it, I mean, I don't know who chose that or what the criteria was, or what the staff used to come up with this, but it seems to me that there might be some other road that is less likely to be developed that might need, that might have more traffic and might actually need it more and should have a higher priority. I, I don't recall this ever coming before the infrastructure committee. It maybe did, but I certainly...
I don't think so.
I, I make most of the meetings, and it seems to me that this is the kind of thing that should come before the infrastructure committee and should be looked at and recommended by the infrastructure committee, because, and, I mean, I have nothing against the other two, they seem like reasonable projects, but this one, which in my mind is, is one that sort of reeks of, you know, there ought to be a developer developing it, that I think we should maybe look to see if there isn't something that's more reasonable and should have a higher priority. Thank you.
Is that part of the old, what we call the business development area that we were going to have present to, I'm going from the, that when we had the meetings with the developers down by Walmart, wasn't that part of that project?
Yes, I believe there was an inclusion of this area, I believe there is a commercial project, I think there's a, I think it's Pam Corporation had originally...
Exactly.
Had a project in this vicinity. Now, I can't testify that this is actually the area where that was at, just...
Is it still, is that project still, I couldn't remember the name of it, but is that project is still being worked upon, or is it in limbo?
No, it's been idle for many years. I have not seen any activity.
Because it was when I first came on council. Yeah, okay.
A commercial development would require curb and gutter, and I don't believe the CMAC actually provides curb and gutter, it's just an asphalt road. So what we may be putting a CMAC, we may be putting in an asphalt road in two or three years from now, some developer may wanna come in there, they're gonna tear it up to put in a curb and gutter, so, I don't know. I still don't think... I, I still don't think that particular project is a good one. Thank you.
The criteria for choosing that, was, was there something specific that made this one stand out above some others?
Well, yes, the, see, currently, we have to maintain that. And so our street superintendent has to maintain that portion. And what he's noticed is that this reach is starting to see a significant amount of additional traffic, which in its current condition requires more maintenance, more observing the condition of that particular reach. The dirt roadways are, are the ones that can get away from you real quick if you don't stay on top of them. So it was suggested by our, our street superintendent that we consider this for an application.
Is there more public comment?
Just quickly, Mike Sanott, was, was Mahan Street ever on any, any radar from your standpoint?
We had approached to me...
Specifically between Springer and Bowman?
Yeah, we, in past years, we did try to coordinate with the county to try to do something on Mahan, and we, it just didn't go anywhere. We, the county didn't express any interest, but yes, in the past, we had attempted to try to coordinate a project along Mahan.
Well, I understand that Arvin has the same problem with the county on a shared roadway, and they've resolved this potentially through Kern Cog. And I brought it up today with the planning, and if there's a project that could be proposed with cost and the city council is behind it, then it's possible you can get the cooperation of the, of Kern County and, and the funding of, of Mahan Street. That section between Springer and Bowman has never been really paved. It was just, what do you, I don't know what you call it, if you just lay down asphalt. And because of the development there, there's no curbs and gutters along the undeveloped lots, so you've got a mishmash. And I understand that, that that could be done with liens against the undeveloped lots so that they are ultimately paying for the curbs and gutters in front of their lots. So...
I think, I think in order to force the property owners to put curb and gutter down on vacant lots, you have to have at least 50% of that block already developed.
It's close. I haven't done the count, but it's close. And I think...
We used to do that back in the 80s in Ridgecrest Heights. If we got 50% in, we could force the other 40% to put it in.
Okay.
And then we could pave the street.
Well, I also talked to Dennis, and, and he said that you could actually do the, do the work and place a lien on each property at some point in time. If the lot is developed, then the lien would be satisfied. So it's, you know, six, one half dozen the other, I guess. But that, that's, Mahan is a, again, I'd say a risky, I've got photographs of, of a couple walking down the middle of the street with a baby stroller. There's no, there's no way, it's not rideable, it's not walkable. It's a dust problem because of the off-road vehicles, as I'm sure the chief knows. Mahan is a, Mahan is a problem. And it's an important street, maybe not from a traffic count standpoint, but it's an important street like Downs because it connects Inyo Kern Road with Ridgecrest or with South China Lake Boulevard. And since the county paved that one little section off, off South China Lake Boulevard, there's been a lot of traffic starting to use it, especially traffic coming into town making a very dangerous left-hand turn off of South China Lake Boulevard onto Mahan. There's no left-hand turn lane there. So it's, even though there hasn't been accidents, I, I'm fairly certain one will happen at some point. So there's, there's issues on Mahan, and I would, I would ask the, the people that, that study these things, I don't think there's ever been a traffic survey on Mahan. I've never seen any ropes on the road or anything of that nature. So, anyway. If, if we accomplished anything, getting Mahan on the radar is, is a major accomplishment, I would say. And getting this county to finally participate would be a, a good step, maybe using the Southern California Edison solution. So, thank you.
I think I, I think I know where you live.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, is there any other council discussion? Is there any other public discussion? Okay. Question?
I move approval.
Is there a second? I'll second.
Mr. Mauer.
Aye.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Ms. Stevens.
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay, the next item on the agenda.
It's yours.
Okay, proposed action to...
Oh, you're done.
Okay, sorry. I left the timer on, sorry. Wake up, everybody. Wait a minute, where am I? Number seven.
Seven.
Yeah, there it is. Discussion of, no, I think, are they still, yes. A discussion of provide direction to the ci, no.
Yes, number seven.
Yeah, okay. To provide direction to the city's representative of the groundwater authority. There are two items that are on the agenda. Both of them, I feel, are probably pretty non-controversial, but I did tell you I would always bring you back policy liability and this fiscal responsibility to you. So the number eight is on the agenda is to approve the Indian Kern Community Service District as an additional appointee, is the member of the PAC. And the reason being is that they made the request, and they've been invited for years and years and years to participate. And the RCD was able to convince them that it was to their benefit to participate, and it is to our benefit for them to be a participant because of being an underdeveloped, that isn't the term.
Disadvantaged.
Disadvantaged community, thank you. Disadvantaged community, we are eligible for grants that we would not be available to maintain or apply for. And so I am asking your direction, I am asking for you to approve that. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion from the public?
Do you just need consensus?
I need, I just need for you to say yes, it's okay for me to vote yes on that.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, everybody says yes.
Eddie, say yes.
Eddie, say yes. Eddie, don't say yes. Eddie, say no.
Eddie, say yes.
Okay, Lindsay? Okay. The other item is the...
You're holding his hand.
It's your fault we're going to go to another one.
Okay, and the other item that is, we, there was a number of agencies that were reviewed by Bob Harrington from Inyo County and Matt Page from San Bernardino County, and brought back two recommendations for, to be the groundwater sustainability managers. There was two that were brought, they brought back two. One was Stetson, and the other was Tim Parker. After many, 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 many hours of discussion in closed session, the recommendation was made to approve a contract with Stetson. And the, among some of the issues that, that we looked at was, I'm trying to see the number that I wrote down. The difference between, one was, okay, I'm going to go back, so I don't have it. The difference in the contract amount was significant. Stetson estimated $250,000 to produce the GSP document that will finally come through to be approved by the GSA board and with input from the PAC and the TAC. He, his estimate was 250,000. And Tim Parker's estimate was, with his group, was 1.2 million for the preparation of the GSP.
Holy cow.
And, and, well, but there are, there are, there were much more elaborate plans that Parker talked to us about, and, but, among other reasons, the, the price was one. But there was many reasons why the recommendation came from, from the board, and the contract is not, will be approved, but we haven't, we haven't negotiated, no. The Kern County is still preparing the contract for approval by the GS, by the GSA tomorrow. And so that is the item on the agenda, and I say, I'm going to say yes, I want us, our ability to approve the contract.
For the 250,000?
Yeah. Now, he, now, the, the 250,000 is being paid not in one fell swoop, but on an hourly basis.
Right, right. That's the estimate, total cost.
And that's for the actual plant, like, is it an amount not to exceed? Or could it?
Pardon me?
Is it like an amount? Because it concerned me that one is 1.2 million, and then one is 200...
And I will bring back if there's other things, but that's, that was it. And, and his, his description of his actions wasn't nearly as, as descriptive or as...
Detailed?
In covering, yes, detailed, as Tim Parker's. And then we may come back and say it isn't. We need more. And I will let you know if it is and what it's going to be used for, but right now, that is the estimate. Okay, is there any council comment on that?
I just had one, there was one more thing on here about a lawyer.
About what?
A lawyer, approving a lawyer.
Well, we're not approving the lawyer. What it is, is, is the Indian Wells Valley Water District has, has an attorney, Jim Worth. Their attorney is partners with Gene McMurtry, who brought forth to the GSA group an aqua helio project that would have sold water from inside the, down near California City to bring water up here. I said I was not going to accept his association with, with Gene McMurtry since he is partners. Well, since that time, and, and I wasn't the only one, others said the same thing. And since that time, McMurtry has left and is in the process of retiring, as, as Jim Worth stated Monday night at the Water District meeting. And so any association with Worth and McMurtry as representatives of the Water District, because McMurtry did represent the Water District at one time, and so this is his ability to do the same thing that Keith is doing and that Phil Hart is doing for the city and the county.
Got it, okay.
So you're not hiring him because the pay comes from each entity.
Got it.
Right. So it isn't really an approval of, it's acceptance of.
Okay.
Okay. So is there any other council comment on those items? Any other public comment?
Yeah, Mike, was at the Water District meeting, and just, council members might be interested to know that the, at least two or possibly more of the Water District Board members were, were not real happy about the Water District not being in on the selection of the Water Resources Manager, to say the least.
Only the two that volunteered that said it. They were in, they were in closed session and made comment, as well as their attorney.
Interesting. But, then I guess I don't understand the complaints that were stated either.
I didn't understand it either. It made absolutely no sense since they voted.
You talk like they were kind of left out, so...
They were not left out. There was only two that, that interviewed all the applicants.
Right, okay, that was Inyo and San Bernardino that interviewed all of them.
Inyo and San Bernardino County.
And then they narrowed it down, and then everybody got in on it?
They narrowed it down, and the recommendations were Parker and Stetson.
I think that's what was being complained. Anyway, they, there were, there was some heartache about that, just, just so you guys know. And, and then, you know, court discussion about Mick Gleason's comments about us doing what we're doing here and what the Water District did, you know, Monday night, and, you know, just, status quo is good on that count. It's good that, that we have these, if not for, these meetings and discussions and directions to our representative, if, if for no other reason, like I stated at the board meeting, that GA has their meeting at 10 o'clock in the morning, which excludes necessarily a lot of people from actually being able to get there until they are willing to move their meetings to the evening. Talks like this are absolutely necessary in a pre-GA meeting. And so it's good that our meetings fall such that we can usually get the agenda from the GA beforehand, and, you know, council members can see them, look them over, think about them, we can discuss them here. Water District doesn't always have that option, unfortunately.
Stan?
Stan Ratorum. If indeed both of the contractors that were finally selected for the down select were bidding to the same statement of work, and they had the same understanding of what the statement of work really was, obviously, you don't want to pay five times as much for one as the other. But quite frankly, based upon the bids, it's, it's my feeling that one of them doesn't have the same understanding that the other one has to that particular statement of work. And I, I would be hesitant without going through and doing some kind of a best and final, making sure that everybody understands the scope of the work.
They all work from the same request for proposal?
Yeah, well, the RFP should have included a statement of work, and however, there, there are still interpretations of the statement of work, and my feeling is that they didn't interpret the statement of work the same. And I guess I would wonder why those two particular people were down selected. Do you know how many there total were?
I believe there was seven.
Seven?
I believe so. I, I, I don't want to lie because I don't remember.
Well, no, no, there were, there were more than three, anyway.
Yes, yes.
My, my, you know, we, we obviously need to make a selection because we need to get on. You know, no question that we should have had somebody under contract two or three months ago. But, but I was involved in a lot of source selections in my 36 years with the Navy, and every time, or almost every time, we came out of a source election, and the source selection's based solely on cost, and I just shake my head. Normally, it always ended up that the guy who was the lowest bidder gave you the lowest quality or what you thought would. So even though I, I certainly wouldn't pick someone that bid 1.2 million where another guy bid 250K, I would be reluctant to pick anybody until I was absolutely sure that they were actually bidding the same thing.
Apples to apples.
Yeah, they're, that, I mean, if it were a matter of 250 versus 300 or 350, I'd say, okay, they might have been bidding to the same statement of work with the same understanding of the statement of work, but when one is almost five times the other, there, there, there probably is something in this. I haven't looked at the statement of work. I, I didn't bother to go look at the RFP. I'm assuming it's online somewhere. I did not look at the statement of work, but since I'm not a hydrologist, I'm not sure how much value there would be of me looking at the statement of work. But I, but I also think that there's maybe an underlying issue that, that should be resolved before we commit to something. And I hate to say that because I, I know, I would have preferred we picked somebody two months ago, but, but when the down select was to somebody that was that skewed, I, I would have to question what the motivation for that down select was. I'm sorry. It just doesn't seem right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy, for bringing this back to the council.
Thank you Peggy for bringing this back to the council. I really do appreciate this. I have some questions in regards to what a difference there is in costs between the, the two that were selected. Are they both state certified hydrologists?
Yes.
And again, apples are apples, oranges are oranges. Are they, are they the same project? I mean, are they talking the same language?
One was more descriptive. I mean, it's, we're producing a GSP.
I, I understand that Peggy.
That's all it was. And it was based on input from, from the PAC and the TAC, from their own personal knowledge, from the State Department of Water Resources, and input from the board.
But such a difference in costs, it just, it kind of makes you question it. At least it does me. But I do thank you for bringing this to the council. Thank you Peggy.
It was a 5-0 vote, so. Okay, that's where we are. Okay, so, the next item. Yeah, the, okay. Discussion of five-minute motion action to approve an in-kind donation, the amount of $700, the International Community Day Committee's use of the Kermiti Center to hold their second International Community Day event. I know you all received an email from Matthew. He came to speak to me this morning and asked that because he was addressing the Lions Club, asking them for some help. He wouldn't be here in time to address us. And I saw that he walked in. Is he still here?
We did.
Okay, both Matthew and Yolanda, okay. And he wanted you to understand that because he wasn't here to address it, didn't mean he had great, great, he was being dismissive with the council thought because he wants our approval. And the item is, the, the International Day, there was about, many, it was packed. It was packed last year. And you saw pictures, you saw the information, and that there is no charge to the community. The community ate free and tried virtually 100 different kinds of restaurants and dishes. And, and it is no benefit to this, this organization, except the recognition of our international community. So, I'm asking for us to do it as an in-kind, like, like we have done. Jason pointed out that there is no cost, that they're making money, so it's just our $700. And so, if there is any discussion, I would like to hear it, please.
I think it's great. I think it's a good idea. I think last year it was very successful. I, I mean, it was unquestionably successful. There's lots of participation and, and you were involved with it. And, and several people ended up pulling cash out of pocket, I'm sure, to help fund it and pay for it individually. I, I think it's good for the community. It's a little bit of money. It's not, for all the reasons you said, I, I don't think it warrants a lot of discussion.
Well, I, unfortunately, last year I was out of town, so I wasn't able to attend. But everything I heard about was good. So, I'm, I'm in favor.
Good. Well, we all can go this time. So, I appreciate that. Is there any other, other comment?
No.
Any public?
Okay, is there any public comment?
It's just back to my concern. I mean, because the fireworks we talked about, it was a benefit to the whole community, too. And so, I mean, a lot of these can make that same case, that it's a benefit to the community.
But they charge.
Okay.
That was the difference.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, and then also for the fireworks thing, I mean, I even, you know, they did an anonymous donation after we did that. And then, some individual who I found out later, you know, actually paid the 700 bucks. And I said, good God, I think the city ought to pay for that. And I don't even know if he ever got reimbursed or not. And he didn't ask for it, whatever. The point is, I don't think when we have a terrific thing, it's great for the city and people love it. And it's a success that you need to pull money out of your pot or anybody else to, to go over and above as one single individual to help fund these things. I think the city ought to do it.
Well, I was honored to do it last year.
I know, and I thank you. But I, I don't think you should have to do that every time.
Well, I wanted everybody else to get the great joy of participation and, and, and the city needs, the city needs to say, we are part of it.
I move approval.
Are you the public?
No, public.
You're doing public?
No one from the public, she called.
I asked the public, there was no comment.
Excuse me.
Okay.
You're excused. Can't leave.
Oh, I'm gonna go.
So, a motion? We had the motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Okay. Public hearings, we have none. Ordnances, we have none. Kitty, Lord. City reports, committee reports. It's City Org.
I didn't bring my notes. We had three items, I can't remember what they were. You're excused.
I didn't bring mine because you were chairing, I knew you would. And I can't remember what they are. I promise, we will report next time, everybody. My apologies to all. Okay. Yes, okay. We need a full report. We'll do it next time. I'm sorry, my apologies.
I didn't grab, I didn't grab my notes.
Okay, Finance Committee.
We did not meet.
We meet next Monday, right?
Okay.
I don't.
Infrastructure.
We meet the fourth Thursday. I don't know, they met last month.
We didn't meet.
Didn't meet?
No, because there wasn't a quorum.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Parks and Rec and Quality of Life.
We reported at the last meeting. We haven't met since then.
Use advisory, you don't have a meeting yet. Is that's correct, right?
We, we will meet next month, Madam Mayor.
Okay. The Action Committee, that's September and March?
Yes.
Okay, you'll report in September?
Yes, ma'am.
RACBB.
Was that the last meeting?
We met, yeah.
Yeah, we, we reported.
Okay. All right, Economic Development.
We met last week. We discussed the draft of this Economic Development strategic plan. I don't know if you all got a copy, too, but Mr. Parsons was asking us to read through it and make comments back, because if there's any concerns we have before the finals put out, and there was a number of things in there that probably need to be scratched or relooked at. The other thing we talked about is the upcoming ICSC for just California. And Mr. Ferris and I are going to attend, we attended the Vegas one, and then, as well as our new economic developer, and then possibly Mr. Strand will attend as well. Oh, and we also had this, some discussions on potentially looking at a website. We have a lot of different agencies in town that have websites, but none of us really hit it out of the ballpark on a website that is a one-stop shop for visitors, film, potential businesses, existing businesses, and people who are looking at moving here, and just if we could do better in that department. So, and just kind of getting ideas of how to go about doing that, so. That's that.
Okay.
I have the agenda.
We do not report the collaborative because many of the items are said as people bringing items that are not developed yet fully to the, to the group. They are just talking about where they're going, what they're looking at, and it isn't action items. But if you'd like to share what you have.
On the City Org? The City Org meeting?
He said collaborative.
Oh, no. I had the City Org agenda for you.
Okay, perfect. Go ahead.
We discussed the potential of increasing share of property tax, reorganization of transit system, and increased sales tax capture.
Right.
Most of it's out of our control.
Most of it's out of our control.
Actually, all of them is out of our control.
The staff, though, is looking at some of those options. How to increase the, say, the property tax?
Property tax, yeah.
And how we can do that based on the RDA that is no longer there, and other, other factors.
I do know for transit, too, that one of my friends from grad school is now a professor at grad school, and she's teaching a transit class. And she was looking for real-world applications. So, her and Starla are in talks on possibly having her class look at our transit system and if there's any ways to increase ridership and, or any ways to improve it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Cut our buses in half, that's how.
Okay, other committees, boards, and commissions? Wallace, I know you have one, right?
Oh, with the, with the league?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the League of Cities, there were two or three hot topics this last time. One was, as Mike Neal brought up, and it was a, a, a pretty spirited discussion from numerous individuals on this SB 649, on the micro cells. And the league is very much opposed to this for, for many different reasons. And as, as addressed earlier, I would, you know, I'd like, I'm going to do a little bit more research on it, but I think that's something that we need to get a letter. And I would like to present it to everybody after everybody has a chance of looking at it. But the, the league is, is, is quite against it. And they're even paying contractors. Sacramento even paid a contractor to help protect the city against this thing from happening. Sacramento was the first to, to hire, to stop this microbid business. So, there's, there's lots of details we'll get into tonight. But suffice it to say that, that they're against it. The other thing that was pretty, you know, spirited, Senator Wilk from the 21st District spoke concerning the, the, very much against the cap and trade issue and the damages that it does to so many different businesses in the state that, that have anything to do with owning any type of truck or vehicle, which is practically every business in the state of some form or fashion. And it's just on top of the, the, the main argument that, that was presented, that, you know, is that we are leading the country on, you know, in just about every category with regulation and, and five different forms of taxation. And here comes another one. We have thousands of businesses leaving California, and then here we go with yet another huge one. And the senator was quite, quite vocal against it. And so, anyway, that is, that's something to consider. Also, a discussion, spirited discussion on the, you know, the issue of the $1,000 shoplifting, where you can just roll out of any mall with, as long as it's under a grand, you can just take off with it. And the police hardly have anything to do with it. It's basically a license to steal. James Bond had a license to kill, and this bill is just a license to steal. So, just go ahead and get on with the program. And one of the gentlemen said that the problem is, is that it's even skewing all of the police reports now, because if, if a shop owner decides that he's sick and tired of having his 10th big screen TV walk out, and he wants to go and try to stop the person, if he goes to try to get into a face-to-face altercation and you call the police, somehow or another, this often gets elevated and escalated to a, to a 211 armed robbery or something. And then it goes from being a misdemeanor to a felony. And they're having problems with a lot of the, the, the cities. The police numbers are getting skewed with these hard, is this, am I making sense?
Yeah. Well, if the suspect uses force or threatens or fear on the person trying to stop them where they're getting their property back, then again, it does turn into a robbery. Not armed, though. It would just be a, an, a section under the robbery.
But it goes from, from just, but it, does it go to a felony?
Yes.
So, goes the felony. So, so I, I had a person, the problem with that is I had a constituent two weeks ago that was screaming about a lot of our, the numbers for, for, for that category. And then, whereas, but it's, they're being skewed because it can be a good thing because you have business owners who are trying to make an issue and stop people from rolling out of their store with property. So, what seems like a horrible statistic is people trying to protect their businesses. So, that, that was a, quite a problem that they were, they were addressing.
Wallace, in all fairness to the police.
Oh, no, this is in all fairness to the police. No, it's, I, I can't believe.
You know, they catch somebody stealing gas out of my U-Haul trucks red-handed, arrest them, and the DA won't prosecute.
Right, no, no, I, anything I'm saying is in direct support of what they're doing. It's terrible.
If I was a police officer, I'd be kind of, why bother to write a report? Because no one's going to bother to do anything with it.
Right, so.
And, and I'm speaking as a businessman that's had a lot of theft.
Right, yeah. So, it, it's nothing new. The police, their hands are tied, and it's just an awful deal that's coming down from the, from the state legislature. So, that's, that's a bigger fish.
Well, no, actually, the state legislature talked us into voting on it. Yeah. Was it safe neighborhood or safe schools?
Safe neighborhoods and schools.
Yeah. And how that makes anything safe? It just keeps them out of jail and to do more.
Right. So, that's been a big, a, a, a great big issue. And then we had Cal City, one or two of the other ones. Cal City was the only one. By and large, the, the, the league, our particular district is, has been more against the marijuana issue than for it. We had one or two, including, only one that spoke for it was Cal City. And a lot of eyebrows were raised at that. But, but that's an issue that a lot of the cities are having to grapple with, and it's coming to a theater near you, and it's coming to a theater near us, that we're going to have to be addressing very sharply. So, but let's see, what else? Those were the main, those were the main issues.
Any other committees?
Kern Cog. By the way, Kern Cog is dark this month, so there won't be a meeting. But in July, two items. Everybody knows what a call box is, right? They're becoming obsolete because most people have cell phones now. I think of all the call boxes in Kern County, only three of them are getting any use at all. So, we're going to probably not see any call boxes in, in Kern County pretty soon, just for your information. Is there tax on call boxes?
Yes.
I don't know.
No.
Probably not.
Probably not.
They didn't talk about the fee, they only talked about not renewing, not renewing the con, they have a contract out for the call boxes. And when the call, when the, when the contract comes up for renewal, we won't be renewing it. One of our, one of our other favorite Senate bills, Senate Bill 1, Kern County's estimated to receive over $400 million over the 10 years. That's, we will get a significantly small amount of that, I think.
400 million?
That's what it says, 400 million. And we're looking at getting six and a half of the 400 million. The, the problem is, there's a couple charts here, and no one explained it, they just handed this out to us. And it shows.
Shows, yeah. Article in today's DI about it.
Was there?
Yeah.
I haven't read today's DI yet, so, but anyway.
What, what period of time is that?
10 years.
Over 10 years?
Over 10 years. Says new city streets and roads investments in millions estimated amounts based on historical data, Ridge Grass 6.42.
So, we had 6.42.
Bakersfield is getting 86. This only comes up to 132 million, so I'm not sure. Lauren, have you received any information on it?
No, no, I haven't.
Okay.
And that's, that's, what's the total number they get used here?
I'm going to have to talk to, get a clarification of this from Kern Cog. They just put, we get a packet every meeting that has stuff like this in it. So, they don't really go into it very much, but. I will, I will try to find out more information so we kind of know they.
There was an article in today's DI about the money from SB 1 that Kern County's receiving. It has some numbers in it, if you want to go look, Wallace.
Okay. And that's it from Kern Cog.
Okay, any other committee reports? Okay, the next item would be the city manager's report. Sir?
I guess the only thing I have is the school started on Tuesday, and. I guess the only thing I have is the school started on Tuesday, and it has been a whirlwind over at the high school and the new middle school.
I'll bet.
We set up an email address for if anybody wants to email in suggestions or anything, instead of trying to man all those calls in case it happened. But Karen Harker and our traffic sergeant are monitoring those. Mr. Kulp is working, trying to get some of the issues already resolved, and there's not much room over there for us to do a whole lot, so we're doing the best we can. So I think that's it.
Okay, that's it. All right then, future agenda items, anybody? Anybody have any?
Agenda item here, but I think that if we want to review his proposal on infrastructure, wouldn't it be a good place to take that? Or did you, or did you want to take it to city org first?
I had originally, but whatever you want to do, because infrastructure is so busy, it has so much stuff.
Yeah, let's look at city org first, and maybe senate.
Then we can go on if we need to, okay.
Because we have a light agenda and.
We do. Our agenda next time, I only think, has one item on it, so.
So we need to throw that on there then.
Yeah, okay.
I haven't read through the proposal totally. I've just got a glance to it.
Anybody else have any future agenda items?
We have that marijuana one coming on the next agenda.
The what?
We are putting marijuana on the agenda.
It's on for, it's the letter to the planning commission.
Oh, that, okay. All right, yes.
That's on next agenda.
Yeah, okay. Mayor and city council comments.
Start with me?
Yeah.
I had the privilege, if you call it a privilege, this weekend of taking my last child off to college. So after 50 years, I'm an empty nester. So that's going to be an experience.
Congratulations.
And four years, $100,000 later.
Way to go. That's your announcement, huh? That's a good one.
That's my announcement.
Eddie?
$100,000, you get off easy.
Yeah. Well, $100,000 is just tuition and room and board. The books, four books were $500.
Wow.
They're not cheap.
Cheap too.
Food is included.
Oh. It'll go up.
After your own.
Madam Mayor, Council, all I have was two things I just wanted to, one, I wanted to ask Mr. Matthew, how was his new hearing device going tonight?
Great. Didn't miss that work.
Fabulous. Thank you, sound, and thank you, Acting Chief, for getting in there and figuring that out.
I like that thing.
The other thing is, I wanted to see if we could do something in reference to our youth. As you know, we've had some Rich Crest incidents that have occurred. So I'm going to see if we can do something. We talked to our youth advisory in reference to doing something. They need something to do outside of hanging out, potentially getting in trouble, getting arrested, messing up their future, and even potentially losing a life. So, I don't know, I'm hoping that council, people out there in TV land, can, we can get together and figure out something to do for the youth, so they don't continue down this path. And then I noticed that Rich Crest is changing. I've seen something on Facebook that was really odd. I've seen a robbery take place at one of the convenience stores.
Armed.
Armed robbery?
Yes, sir. We had actually two. We had one at the convenience store, and then at one where a juvenile tried to rob the pizza guy.
Wow.
But the pizza guy fought back.
Yes.
Yeah. It's, I mean, I know we love our community, and we think that it's going to remain, you know, Andy Griffin kind of style, but it's changing, and we're going to have to, we're going to have to change and do some things with it, and get out of some of our stuck ways of doing things. So it just breaks my heart to hear that we're headed in that direction, and we just can't continue to think that we're.
Do you think if we had a community forum where everybody, not just government people, but ordinary people?